I'd like to call the July 1st Planning Commission meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call roll.
Commissioner Steven Anstadt?
Here.
Commissioner Nora Dukas?
Present.
Commissioner Michael Westner?
Present.
Commissioner Richard Rodriguez?
Here.
Do here's and do present.
Now's the time for public comments. This is time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda, not seeing any, moving on. Could I have a motion for approval for the January 14 minutes?
So moved.
Second.
I'll vote.
Aye.
I can't vote, I wasn't present. Approval of the January 28 meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
I'll vote.
Aye.
Moving on to, and let the record reflect that I voted aye even though I didn't say aye, February 11th?
So moved.
Second.
I'll vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And approval of the February 18th meeting?
On the February 18th, on page 2 of 7 at the top, Chrisman is between cells, we've got C-H-R-I-S-M, it's coming in, Mr. Joe Chrisman.
Okay. Beyond that, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll vote.
Aye.
Now is the hearing LU 100037, request for a conditional use permit to continue operation of a retail building materials sales yard. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm just waiting for our PowerPoint to be queued. Good morning Chair Dukas, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Michelle Gluckert-Diana of Planning Division staff. The project before you today is conditional use permit LU 100037 for a retail building materials sales yard known as Frontier Building Supply. The site is located at 3288 Vineyard Avenue in El Rio. It's bordered to the north and the south by commercial and industrial uses, to the west by Vineyard Avenue and River Park Development within the city of Oxnard, and to the east by a residential neighborhood that fronts along Minus Street. Here's an aerial photo of the property, and just to orient you Vineyard Avenue is across the top of your screen, this is to the west of the project. Here's a few site photos that were taken by planning staff during the site visit in April. The photos show the entrance to the sales and display area on the site, the parking area directly in front of the sales and display area, the identification sign that's right along Vineyard Avenue, and the landscaping that is right along Vineyard Avenue as well. Some additional photos show the side of the sales and display area with the warehouse area which is attached to the sales display area, and the materials, some of the materials that are stored on site including sand, brick, and block. In 1985, the Planning Commission approved CUP 4281 for the construction and operation of Frontier Building Supply. At the time the permit was issued, the site was vacant and no land use permits had been issued on site. The Commission granted the CUP for a 10-year period expiring in 1995, and in December 94, the Planning Director approved a five-year extension to continue the operation until the year 2000. The permit expired in the year 2000 without being renewed by the original permutee. Frontier Building Supply has been in continuous operation since the year 2000 and is currently operating without a permit. The current property owner is in escrow to sell the site, and that is how this knowledge that the expired permit came to their attention and came to ours. They are seeking to continue, to receive a new CUP to continue the use legally, and they came to us in March of this year to seek that conditional use permit. To date, the Planning Division has not received any complaints about the site, and all of the constructed structures on the site have been permitted through zoning clearance. The request before you today is a 20-year CUP, and this will replace CUP 4281 which is expired. There's no new construction, grading, or any modifications taking place on the site. The applicant is proposing a slight increase in the hours of operation as well as the number of employees, and I just want to point out that there are no immediate plans by the permutee or the future, potential future property owner to increase these hours or number of employees, but because they are requesting a 20-year CUP, they wanted this flexibility built into their permit in case in the future they do want to expand just a little bit. Here's the site plan which is also included in your packet, and I just pointed out where the sales and display area are, the warehouse, and the two parking areas on the site. During the original permit process for CUP 4281, a potential drainage issue was identified on the project site. A mitigation measure was developed and an MND was prepared. The Planning Commission approved and adopted the MND in 1985. The mitigation measure was implemented and the structures were constructed. The current proposal does not involve any expansion of the existing structures on the site, and as explained in Section 1 of the staff report, planning staff has determined that there is no substantial evidence to warrant the preparation of a subsequent MND, and therefore an addendum to the MND has been prepared, and that's included in your packet as Exhibit 5. Staff determined that this project meets all of the findings set forth in Ventura County Non-Coastal Zoning Ordinance Section 8111-1.2.1.1, and the findings are discussed in detail in Section 2 of the staff report. The county notified the city of Oxnard of the project, and the city responded that they have no comments or conditions to place on the CUP. The El Rio MAC also reviewed this project at an April 15 meeting, and they do support the project. The hearing today was adequately noticed, and no comments have been received by staff between the date the staff report was prepared and today's hearing. Staff recommends that your commission take the following actions: certify that your commission has reviewed and considered this staff report, all exhibits thereto, and all public testimony at the Planning Commission hearing on this matter; approve and adopt the SEQA findings and substantial evidence contained in the staff report; approve and adopt the attached addendum to the mitigated negative declaration; approve and adopt the conditional use permit findings and substantial evidence contained in the staff report; approve CUP LU 100037 subject to the attached conditions; and specify that the Planning Division is the custodian of the documents pertaining to the subject permit and environmental document, and that the location of those documents shall be in the Planning Division files. This concludes my presentation today, but I am certainly available for questions, and I also wanted to let you know that the property owner Wes Gruhl is present, as well as his representative Lisa Woodburn if you have any questions of them. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask each Planning Commissioner to state on the record whether or not he or she has received any oral or written ex parte communication regarding this agenda item that is not already contained in the record before us on this matter. Please disclose the substance of that information only if that information is not contained in the record before us on this matter. Commissioner Anstadt?
I had no communications on the site, that's all.
I've had no communications, but I have driven past the site several times going to and from the probate court.
I also have no communication. I've been there with the site, driven past it many times.
And I have no disclosures. So now, are there questions of staff by the Commission at this time? Okay, moving on, we'll open the public hearing. Is there a presentation by Lisa Woodburn?
I just have a few comments.
Okay, if you could speak into the microphone, state your name and...
Hello, my name is Lisa Woodburn, and I'm with Jensen Design and Survey. I'm here today representing the applicants, the Gruhl family. And I, first of all, want to thank planning staff, county staff as a whole, but planning staff in particular. Michelle's done a tremendous job. Appreciate all her hard work and her excellent presentation this morning. And I just want to add a couple things. I like to call this type of a project a reinstatement of an existing CUP, but it's actually a little bit more than that because we will be complying with all the current codes and regulations of the county. I'm sure you're aware that there's a sewer project going on in El Rio, and we will be connecting to the sewer as soon as it's available. We understand that's probably going to be near the end of this year, 2010, early 2011. The other thing I want to call your attention to is, I don't know if you remember on the site plan Michelle showed, we are putting in a bicycle locker for the employees, and that's to be, to comply with the current parking regulations that were recently adopted. So that's something again that we added to the project that wasn't part of the project before. We did go to the El Rio MAC and got very positive comments from them. They find this project to be beneficial to the community. And, see, other than that, I just want to say that we have read all the conditions, and we agree to them, and we ask that you support staff's recommendations. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see. Go ahead.
And I assume you can answer these, if not maybe the property owner can. It's been operating without a permit for 10 years?
Correct.
Is that correct?
What happened was Mrs. Gruhl, my applicant, the applicant's mother owned the property, and she's passed away. And the children inherited the property with, they didn't, they didn't know that the conditional use permit had expired. So it came to their attention now that it's in escrow, and that's why we're here.
So there were no attorneys involved in the process of transition of the business from the owner to the heirs that brought that to anybody's attention?
It was never brought to anyone's attention.
And the reason that we're here today is because the property's going to be sold?
Yes. And, well, the reason we're here today is it came to the attention of the owners when the property went into escrow that the CUP had expired. So we knew we needed to get the CUP reinstated.
Okay, I guess my question is, it's going into escrow because it's going to be sold or because the heirs are taking proper ownership of the property?
It's going to be sold.
I see, okay. A question about the operating hours. I think I saw there's going to be a slight modification, I think significant, but these hours are 7 o'clock in the morning, and correct me if I'm wrong, to approximately 6:00 in the evening, and I think 7:00 on Saturday until 4:00 in the afternoon on Sunday.
Correct.
I'm clear on that. Is that the public hours of operation?
Was that...
Where it's open to the public?
That would be the public hours, yes.
Then I guess I would ask for clarification on what the hours would be for staff, since it is a supply construction site, and you deal with both wholesale and retail operations, and knowing construction business tends to start turning shovels the soil over at 7:00 in the morning. What are the hours of operation for your staff? And what I'm getting to is whether or not staff is going to be able to operate machinery before 7:00 in the morning, creating a noise factor, as opposed to the public walking in the door.
Wes, I'm going to introduce Wes Gruhl. He's the operator.
What they would do is open up at 7:00 in the morning.
I'm sorry.
What they would do is open up at 7:00.
Excuse me, could you state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Weston Gruhl. My address is 18220 Ghost Town Street. That's Tehachapi, California. So what they would do at 7:00 in the morning, they would punch in on the time clock, then they would go out and move, you know, if there was a tractor that had to be moved for dumping sand or forklifts and that aspect of it, and then at 4:00, they would do the same thing, they'd close up at 4:00, park those pieces of equipment. What we have, there's a roll-up door in the first bay of our warehouse where we keep the equipment, so then if somebody was to break in or something like that, they couldn't get into that part. And then, so they'd probably be there maybe 15 minutes after the time that they would close.
Okay. So you're saying there'll be no staff activity with any type of machinery before 7:00 in the morning?
No, no.
How about deliveries?
Those would, at 7:00, usually what they do is in the afternoon, before they close, they load the truck the day before, and it's all tied down and ready to go. So when that person clocks in at 7:00, then they're ready to drive out the gate.
How about receipt of materials?
That's usually later in the day, probably, you know, mid-morning, because if you try to do it at the same time as a customer's coming in the gate or the truck's going out the gate, it becomes, because, becomes a problem for, you know, equipment coming back and forth, so they always try to schedule it, probably been part of the day.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Is there any more from staff? Okay, then I'd like to close the public hearing, and let's have deliberations.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we adopt the recommended actions found on our staff pages 38 and 39 as presented.
I would move second.
Comments?
Yes.
I'm not comfortable with a 20-year CUP. We had a 10-year CUP obviously in place before with the Planning Director's ability to issue a continuance or reissuance for a traditional five years. That seemed to work pretty well. I'm not, I'm not sure, but as a result of that, or since that time, we've operated without a permit for 10 years, and the processes have changed as far as various codes that the county is required to hold businesses accountable to. I think 20 years is just too long a time. I would prefer to see that 10 and 5 again like it was previously. I don't think we have responsibility to, I guess, add value to a property by initiating or issuing a 20-year permit when we can do the same thing with a 10-year permit with the ability to extend at the discretion of the Planning Director.
Could, could we hold off on the vote and, and get input from, from staff on this?
Absolutely.
Would you?
It's part of the discussion. So it's not...
Okay. I can't make eye contact because of these things.
Kathy Shaq.
Hello there. Could you speak to the 20-year permit time? And if that's, okay.
You know, the permit time is actually an item that is under our review right now that we're reviewing in its entirety. We're actually preparing like a white paper on it about how we're going to go forward with this in the future. So we're in the midst of that, why we require expiration dates for CUPs and not for PDs, a finding in the, in the ordinance calls for that. So we're going through that, really revisiting that issue, and then we're going through to say what types of uses require what types of extensions and time periods, because it is a little bit of an area that's up in the air right now. So we don't have any firm guidance with the exception of mining that we did weigh in on maybe 20 years ago, so we're revisiting that issue also. So we don't really have any, any firm guidance. We do look at CUPs, we can put a 10-year in a 10-year, or a 10-year in a 5-year, and absolutely relook at it, because the purpose of the CUP is we have to make sure that not only the existing, but the future land uses are looked at. So, you know, there could be a midterm jumper is what we call them. We take a look at them in 10 years for consistency, and then we move forward with the, with the other 10-year. That's a pretty low-level review at the Planning Director level, so that's absolutely possible too. But just to let you know, Commissioner Rodriguez, it's a topic that we're fully reviewing right now.
Okay, thank you. I feel much more comfortable with what you've just stated as far as a 10 in a 10, or a 10 in a 5 and a 5, as opposed to flat-out 20-year CUP without review. Given the fact the area is in a state of flux, it borders on the, on the city limits of Oxnard, it's about to connect to the sewage system, and there is a major general plan review update going on which will include, I think, approximately 6,000 homes within about a half mile of that location off of Vineyard. There's just too much influx in that area to leave it out there for 20 years. There's also potential incorporation. So if we could amend, I'd be comfortable with, with signing off on this if we could amend that CUP recommendation as stated by the Planning Director.
Yes.
What's the historical precedent of 20-year term? Is that common?
You know, we just look at two things. One of them, we look at what the applicant is asking for. Lots of times applicants come in, I got one, an application last week, they asked for a two-year permit. So one, we look at what they ask for, and then we look at the, you know, the existence, how long they've been in business. We take into account the amortization of buildings if they're going to build one. This one doesn't have any building that's going to happen. We look at the history, and if there's any history of violations, obviously we wouldn't issue if somebody a 20-year permit if there was any sort of history on violation, it would be a much shorter permit that we would take a look at. So right now, the collective, what the applicant is asking for, what the managers review, what the history is on the site, you know, the build-out, yeah, compliance with the, with the current conditions, all of that comes together to make a decision. But like I said, you know, I want to have more of that in the staff's control. I want to really understand why we're issuing permits for the length that we are, and that is why we're in the midst of doing this white paper right now, to hopefully set some standards and guidelines so both the county staff and the applicants can understand when they come in how long of a permit that we would be likely to recommend to the decision-making body.
I have a question for the applicant. Excuse me, I have a question for the applicant.
Okay, then I have to reopen the public hearing. And could the applicant please come forward for a question? Thank you. Go ahead.
What's the impact on you or your sale if we go to 10 and 10 or some other formula?
That's a tough, that's a tough question there. I mean, I don't know exactly what the applicant that is purchasing our place, what he would do. I mean, I'm sure, I mean...
Is a CUP a contingency on the sale?
Well, what happens with the loan for the bank, the bank has to have that CUP to be able to loan the monies to him. That's how it all came about, and that. Would there, I mean, applying to school, I mean, would it be 15 years would work more than, than 20, or?
Would a 10 and 10 cause a failure of the contingencies, or a failure to get financing?
I don't think so. I mean, I don't know what his loan, if it's how many years, it's going to be. That is a good, good question. I mean...
Okay, I have a question of staff. Is this information, this exchange, is this something the Planning Commission has the power to base a decision on?
Your permit approval standards are fairly well circumscribed by the non-coastal zoning ordinance, and I'm looking at 8111-12.11. There does not seem to be a specific finding there with regards to sale of properties and the applicant's financial arrangements for that. However, Commissioner Anstadt just heard from planning staff that a lot of times, these years of CUP requests are based upon whatever the applicant requests, and the applicants, every applicant who walks in the door has different situations. And so Commissioner Anstadt's questions went to what, what is this applicant's situation to help him understand why the request was made for 20, or if his request fits within the 10-10, 10-5-5, or whatever permutation that they have. So I think it's a legitimate inquiry, but it's not part of the findings.
Okay. If I could just, thank you very much.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing again, and to continue discussion, over the, over the 10 years that, that this has been operating without a permit, the only thing that has changed is our parking standards. They have included a bicycle, you know, another mode of transportation, and in this situation, it's really appropriate because I see a lot of people riding their bikes to work. So it seems to me that the, the grading, the, what is the, is it the stormwater plan that was, that had the MND and the, the review? I haven't seen a lot of, a lot of changes, and I'm, I'm thinking that unless I can come up with something that is reasonable other than a vague discomfort for 10 years, I would be inclined to move for the, the 20 years, just as staff has worked out and recommended. That's just my two cents. Do, do we restate the motion, or?
Before we get to restating the motion, I have a couple of other questions related, directed to staff, I guess, as relates to CUPs, but maybe it's probably more appropriate, they're more general, probably more appropriate for, to make sure his comments at the end of this session. Thank you.
Call for motion.
Well, I guess the first discussion is...
I think, I think you already have a motion.
You have a motion for the...
You have a main motion, so if you wanted to change the motion, it would be an amendment, so the amendment has precedence, so you'd have to vote on the amendment first before you go to the main motion, which was to approve staff recommendation.
Okay. Could we, the, could you restate your amendment then, if you have one?
Well, if I may, my understanding is you would go from a straight 20-year with no discretion, the staff would have to extend it beyond that 20 because it would expire according to Condition 3B. So what is, the request is to break the 20 to 10s, the 10 being at the Planning District's discretion.
Correct.
All right, then if, I would like to amend my motion to include an amendment in the time limits condition that it go from a 20-year to a 10-year with a 10-year extension at the Planning Director's discretion.
I guess I have a question about that. Planning Director's discretion.
It means a Planning Director level hearing is what it is. So it's a review, and really where it comes from is the, the finding under 8111211E. It says the proposed development, if allowed by a conditional use permit, is compatible with the existing and potential land uses in the general area where the development is to be located. So that is the finding that we look at, at the 10-year review. We look to the surrounding community, and to ensure that they remain consistent with that finding, we look to see if they're in compliance with their permit conditions, we look to see if there's been any complaints, and then we have a Planning Director level hearing for a continuance of the remaining 10 years of the permit. It's, it's pretty typical.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, please vote. Aye?
Aye.
I oppose.
Okay, no. All right. Would you like to state for the record what your opposition is?
I think we have historical precedent. I think the duration of CUPs is currently under review, and I think the applicant has a right to rely on what exists. The Department went through the, went through the application line by line and found no reason to modify it. I understand and appreciate why you want to do that, and I think it's probably a good practice, but I think you're...
I don't to rely on what exists until the policy's changed.
Very well. Next, the agenda is discussion. Report by the Planning Director.
Good morning, Planning Commissioners. Let's see, I have several things that I'd like to talk to you about. It's been a while since we've met. One thing that I want to keep you updated on is our Get to Excellence items and how we're moving forward with that plan. We do have two large items on the board agenda for July 13th and July 27th. So the 13th item is the proposed revisions to the administrative supplement of SEQA, and the July 27th is the proposed revisions to the initial study assessment guidelines. So those are going out for a lengthy public review right now. They have been out, we have had workshops on them, we have had, I believe, 300 response to, comments, and then response to comments on the initial study assessment.
to comments on the initial study assessment guidelines. So, that whole packet, and it's out for, I believe, a 30-day review right now before it goes. So, we get really nice public comments, and hopefully, a lot of people showing up to the hearing, that that's going to go forward on the 27th. So, there's been an awful lot of work by staff to, not planning staff, but staff from every county agency to make both of these things happen, the initial study assessment guidelines. Every agency looked at it. They looked at their area plan policies and the general plan policies, the cumulative impacts. So, they're a lot more detailed than they were before, and I think, which leads to a lot more predictability for our applicants and our clients that come in. So, I'm excited for those to move forward. One of the other things that is moving forward, but that doesn't require a board review, is standard conditions and mitigation measures. And so, there was a very large meeting of county staff where everybody collected their conditions, and then, sat together in a room for several hours and went through them, and then standardized the format, that not only the planning department, but the air pollution control district and the ag commissioner's office, and everybody would write their conditions in the same kind of format to make them a lot easily understandable by the applicants and more easily enforceable by the agencies. So, there's an awful lot of effort going on on that front. So, you know, I would say in August, September, October, when all of these things really come into play, and we add that to our, the new discretionary permit coordinator that we had, and the single application, and the single billing, and all of the things that we've already put in play, this will really be a great moment for us to hopefully have some really good consistency and rhythm in processing permits. So, we've been really busy with that. We've been very busy with public hearings. So, we have 18 hearings on discretionary decisions between the planning director-level decisions, what you've got going on, and what the board has going on in July, all planning actions. So, we're very busy right now, which is where I want to get to your agenda, and talk to you a little bit about that. I have been hearing for a while from you, and from members of the board, and from members of the public, that of our noticing requirements, that, you know, we should really update our noticing requirements. So, I, you know, we've talked about this before. We go over and above what state law requires. But, we've put a lot of things in play in trying to really respond to that, because when you get down to it, SEQA is really nothing more than a public notification. You want to notify the public about what's going on. And so, you know, we have gone to the bright-colored postcards instead of just the generic, you know, opening the envelope, and it looks so generic. So, we've put the map on it. We've gone out and done a lot of notification, and then, we've launched just recently this new planning division public hearing notification that you can register online with your email, and every time that a planning commission or a planning director or cultural heritage board, mobile home reentry board, anything that comes up that we're responsible for, you'll get an automatic email. So, it's really nice. I registered to my personal email, so I get it on my cellphone. And every time the agenda's updated, it tells you, here's the new agenda, and here's a link to the staff report, so you can link right to it. So, that, you know, hopefully, what we want to do is get a very robust list going on that. So, we've sent it out to hundreds of stakeholders, HOAs, all of the MACs, property owners association, anybody that we can find that we were sending things out by hand. So, we're getting this nice list together to people are notified all the time if they want to be notified, and they don't have to be notified of all of them. They can just click. They're only interested in cultural heritage board, and that's all will notify them on. So, we've put that process into play in the last few weeks, and that seems to be working out really good. So, we're trying to be very proactive on the, we want people to come in here and understand what's going on and have a nice transparent system. So, that leads me to your agenda for July that I want to talk to you about, because I do have your attendance that Daniella's done, and I'm, this is for July 15th and July 29th. So, as it stands now, I have a full commission, because on the 15th, we have the Caltrans project, which is a high occupancy vehicle lane between here and Santa Barbara, and that includes a bicycle path. It has underpass. It has a parking area. There's a lot of components to it. Caltrans has been working on it for a very long time, and so, that's going to be coming before your commission. There's also a communication facility in the coast, and a major modification and a zone change for Brooks College out on Highway 33. So, the Brooks Institute is going to be in here, and we've been working on that project for a while. Then, on the 29th, there is going to be a permit in here that is an upgrade to an existing wastewater treatment facility. It's the Santa Clara wastewater treatment facility out on Mission Rock Road. And then, I have confirmed this morning that we are going to have the HABAD hearing in Oak Park on the 29th also. So, I would estimate that both of those hearings are going to be quite lengthy. The HABAD hearing alone might take a good part of the day. So, just wanted to let you know for your time management, those would probably be long days for us. And also, you know, there are complex projects. Some of them have their own specific issues. If either, if any of you want to come and sit down and talk with me or staff before the hearing or after you get your staff report, if you want any clarification, or just have time to come in and review some issues, I'd absolutely be happy to do that, and I know Robert would too. And-
Director, real quick, which is the best date for, if I wanted to come in and sit and talk with you as a staff person? I know, obviously, Thursdays tend to be hearing dates and things like that. You know, Friday afternoon, 5:30. Yeah, you should have seen your face.
Well, I was thinking if that was going to be over a glass of wine or not, which would be a fun time to talk to you.
But I just want to make sure I'm not interfering with the staff's time.
No, I think, you know, the only date that I watch out for is the board day, really, is Tuesday, because sometimes we don't have a timed certain item on there, and I need to be available for them. But, really, other than that, if you set an appointment, we have a calendaring system that ensures that you would come in, and we would just block that time out and be available. So, any day's a good day to have a discussion.
But, obviously, Monday afternoon, Tuesday morning's probably not.
Yeah, Tuesday morning, yeah, not so good.
Okay, yeah, good stuff. Thank you.
Okay, so, does anybody have any questions, or do we have attendance for those days that are looking good so far?
Just for a matter, for the record, so county council's aware of this, through a city council person, I was asked about meeting with people as far as the HABAD house issue, and I directed that individuals to have that person contact the planning department and make that available to any and all other commissioners, rather than just the one. And so, when I discussed it with my supervisor, we feel, based on what I've been told by county council, that's the best thing that I'm doing now, when people approach me, is to make, have them call the director, so it's available to all the commissioners before we make a decision. I don't know what the new regime's going to do at county council as far as how we go out and visit and talk with people, but I think that's probably the best methodology that I think is out there, as far as ex parte contact.
Okay. And then, one final thing that I have to add for a little bit of good news is that we have hired two new employees recently. So, Nancy Francis, you know, retired, as she was the longtime manager of the subdivision section. And so, actually, yesterday was her last day, a very sad day for us around here, because she has been just a real joy to work with all these years. But, we did hire somebody. His name is Brian Baca. He comes to us by way of the County of San Diego, and he has worked at the County of Santa Barbara. And I believe he was a commissioner, a planning commissioner for the city of solving. So, he has a lot of experience. He sits on the state mining and geology board. He's a certified geologist and hydrologist. So, he brings a wealth of knowledge to the planning department, and so, we've enjoyed having him here this last month. And then, we also finally have our Surface Mining and Reclamation Act, our SMAR, coordinator, somebody that's going to coordinate all of the mining and all of the permitting and review of the mining operations right now, and her name is Ebony McGee. And she comes to us, right now, she was working for the city of Compton, but before that, she was working for the county of Riverside in their SMAR program. So, she also has a wealth of mining knowledge. So, it's fun to have both of them on board right now. So, we're really focusing in on our mining program. So, that is all the updates that I have for you. Do you have anything for me today?
I anticipate I'll want to see you also on these items.
Sure. Just give me a call, and we'll be able to set up some time.
Okay, then that is the end of our hearing.
I just want to comment. On the CUP permits, it seems like we run across this all the time, certainly in the short time I've been here, expired CUPs that have gone on for years and years and years without any catch-up or notification, or I guess, or review to reissue. What are we doing, we, as a planning department, doing to catch up on those? I mean, we have, you know, taxes and everything else, you know, you don't, you're late and you get a notification in this computerized world we live in today. Has the planning department got some sort of tickler system in place, or working towards a tickler system to bring those things to the fore, rather than let them languish, you know, for extended periods of time? I'm assuming, because obviously, in the case in point, the responsibility is supposed to be with the property owner to get a renewal. But, that said, it seems to me there's some responsibility with the planning department as well.
Right. And we have taken a lot of action on that. So, about, I want to say, three years ago, we got a position in the planning department to specifically do condition compliance, and that was just simply lacking for probably 15 years due to budget constraints. But, we did get that position, and so, we have somebody now. We've built a very robust program in the last three years. But, you can imagine, you know, where we had hundreds and hundreds of cases, that that one person is going back into every case, every case except mining, because there's somebody specifically to do mining, and going back in and reviewing every case. So, a lot of part is she has to go into the file room, grab the file, figure out what it's for, you know, update her system, call the client and saying, I'm either coming out, or I've done the review. And so, it's a full condition compliance review for every case that we have in there. So, of course, when we're doing that, we're coming across cases like this, that permits that have expired, that either they have a new owner, or they had no idea they had a condition use permit, or they had one for 20 years and it had sold three times, and the third owner has no idea. So, this is probably why we have 10 or 15 hearings every month for the planning department, because this one person is going out and finding these things. So, it is hundreds of permits that we're looking for. So, this wasn't one that had come up in our list of review, but it would have come up eventually. So, now, we're just playing this huge game of catch-up by not having this position funded for us before. But, the board's seeing it's important, because the code does say that when we issue a permit, that we should look at it once every three years, unless the conditions call for more stringent requirements, such as a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program that we would look at. So, then, we've also built into our permitting system a mitigation compliance screen, that now, when we apply mitigation, monitoring, reporting programs, we take all of that information and enter it in to make sure that all of those things are done, and there is a tickler system for that. And then, we've gone out, and we have, where we find all of the cases, we've tried to bring every bit of information forward into our permitting system, and explicitly, the expiration dates, and then, what we have in our permitting system, we send out, it's every month or every quarter, your permit's about to expire. Your permit's going to expire in nine months, or 10 months, or 12 months. You need to come in and talk to us. So, where we know about the expiration now, now, we're being proactive, even though the code does say that they're responsible for their own date. We are being proactive in sending out the letters and saying, your permit's about to expire. You need to come in and see us. So, we're, you know, all of those things are being put in play, some of them a couple of years ago, that are just now starting to bear the fruit that we wanted to, and some of them, just up until maybe six or eight months ago, we put this process in place, where we're going to do that notification, that upfront notification. So, it is hard to get a case before you that is like, we've been out there for 10 years, and we didn't know they existed, but I wanted to let you know there's an awful lot of effort going on in the background with one person really trying to manage this giant of a job.
Okay, well, it fills up a lot of questions, or answers to questions that I had in my mind, why these things were occurring, because it just doesn't seem like there was any motivation for a property owner to do anything, since there are apparently no sanctions.
To me, and I asked about this case this morning, the sanctions really should be, a case comes to our attention no matter how, and the permit is expired. It's a violation of the code. You cannot operate a permit with, I mean, you can't operate a business without a permit, a business of this type. So, really, the way that it should have played out, and the way that I want to go back to my staff after reading this, to saying, when they come in, it is a notice of violation. It's a violation. You should issue the notice of violation, and the penalty for that, in operating a business without a permit, is you pay double fees when you come to the counter. So, there should have been a cause and reaction with that, because that is what the code requires.
And that notice is recorded?
That notice isn't recorded, because what would happen is they would do a notice of violation, and the abatement of the violation is to file for the permit. So, they would have abated it. But, there is a penalty associated with that, and that is in the fee schedule that the board adopted. That's the way that it's supposed to work.
But, we're not doing it.
Well, I didn't see it happen in this case, and that's why I wanted to go follow up to say, why didn't that happen?
But, that's just an in-house training issue at this point.
Yeah, I think so, because that is what the code says. That's what the fee schedule says. And so, you know, I think that a lot of times, you, you know, obviously, they found this case through escrow, and it would have maybe seemed punitive to go, okay, you've come in through escrow, but now, here's what's going to happen. And it does seem hard to, you know, you've come in, you're trying to settle it up, and now, the county's going to issue a notice of violation. But, really, that is the way it plays out, because if we don't, say they didn't come in. And that's what happens a lot of time. People will say, well, we'll all come in in 30 days, or all come in in 60 days, and they don't issue the notice of violation, because they're trying to, you know, be nice about it. But, that doesn't really establish the record that we need to establish. So, even though it seems punitive if somebody comes to us and say, oh, I forgot my permit, and then, we issue a notice of violation, that's why we do it, to make sure that it gets followed up on. There's no penalty to that notice of violation if you fix it in the first 30 days.
Does it make sense, though, to have a two-tier standard for someone who does come in because of a death in the family and things getting lost? I find that pretty, I found that explanation credible, versus someone that you have to go after?
Yeah, but the code doesn't really differentiate between the circumstance. But, I do think that that's what we try to take into consideration, and that's why there may be some inconsistencies when you follow it, because that does seem compelling. And so, obviously, that didn't happen. And, and I don't know, I'm going to go back and just follow up and really make sure that we're following the code correctly when it comes to that issue. And actually, you know, on reflection, I think the code even says that if you, if we issue a notice of violation and you fix it within 30 days, then you don't have to pay the doubling of the fees. Actually, that's what I think that it says. But, in doing that, that notice of violation stays out there until a decision is made. I mean, if you would have denied the case today, then there still would have been no notice of violation. So, really, it should be there just as a light that we know that something is going on out there, and the abatement would have been today's hearing.
I concur with that 100%. They have to have some skin in the game, as they used to say. Thank you. I appreciate the information. And I appreciate everything you're doing over there to update and create those efficiencies within the department.
Thank you. I think that the staff is doing a really good job. Is there anything else? This meeting's adjourned.